Good evening. Welcome to, I guess it's March 21st, city council meeting. Thank you for being here. We have a busy night and a lot of people to recognize. The first person I would like to recognize and ask to come forward is Keegan Thomas. And he's going to come up to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So would everybody please stand? And Keegan will let you lead us off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Keegan. So we always have to ask questions and find out who our pledge leader is before we let you leave or go sit down. So the first question, and I'll let anybody ask questions, but I'll ask you a few questions first. Where do you go to school?
Richmond Elementary.
Step forward just a little bit. All right.
Richmond Elementary.
Okay. And what grade are you in?
Fifth grade.
And who's your teacher?
Mrs. Zacharias.
He has all the answers, doesn't he? Okay. And what's your favorite subject?
Math.
That was easy. Okay. And what do you do for-
Ask him what his dad does for a living.
What does your dad do for a living?
He teaches at Meridian Tech.
What does he teach?
I'm sorry, I have no idea.
Well, does his mother?
Well, no wonder. That's great.
Has no idea. I threw you a softball there.
Joe, you just made me forget every one of my questions. Let's see. Oh, I know what I was going to ask you. What do you do for fun?
I play soccer.
And what is your, do you have a certain soccer team you-
Competitive Apex.
Competitive Apex. And so you play here and you play out of town? And very good. Who brought you here tonight?
My mom, Nicole, and the hat.
All right. Hi, Mom. Who else has questions for Keegan?
I've got one. So how happy are you that today is the Monday after spring break?
I should say I would rather be in my bed.
All right. I'm going to come down there. And we have some proclamations. The first one is the Stillwater Public Library presents two books. And, well, that's from last time, right?
Should be traumatic brain-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know why.
TBI.
Thank you. I just have the wrong notes. But I do have the right proclamation, so. Would Ally come up here?
Whereas Oklahoma participates in a public health traumatic brain injury surveillance and prevention program. And whereas the risk of traumatic brain injury, TBI, is highest among adolescents, young adults, and those older than 75 years. And whereas Oklahoma ranks in the top 10 of states in the number of cases reported, with 4,221 Oklahoma residents sustaining a TBI in the year 2010, and a total of 17,890 injuries occurring from 2004 to 2007. And whereas, TBI Raiders is an organization formed to increase awareness and to help students and young adults with traumatic brain injury learn job skills and leadership skills, which will enable them to succeed in school and their community. Now therefore, I, Gina J. Noble, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby complain the week of March 20th through 26th, 2016, in the City of Stillwater as TBI Raiders Week, to bring awareness to the public about what is being done to help those living with the traumatic brain injury.
Would you like to say something?
Yes. I'm very grateful to the City of Stillwater for everything that it has done and offered and has helped, so much to the point that those that I see in the medical field have done, said repeatedly, they don't ever want me to leave the City of Stillwater because of how much this city has helped me recover to the point to where I get to have, because of the medicines worked out wonderfully, I get to have my normal days again, to where I am back to normal. They're not consecutively, but I get to have a lot of them. And it's a lot of, a great deal to think of this community and the businesses, because I can walk around town and the business leaders that know me, I can walk into the businesses and the business owners that know me, they'll ask how I'm doing, or they'll see if I'm having walking problems, and they'll just offer me a chance to sit down or relax, and they'll just offer some support. So I'm very grateful to the city. So thank you.
Whereas, the youth of Stillwater will determine the future strength of our country and be the bearers of our democracy. And whereas, youth need a safe haven from various negative influences such as child abuse, substance abuse, depression, and crime. And youth need readily available resources to assist them when faced with circumstances that compromise their safety. And whereas, the Safe Place Program must meet performance standards relative to outreach and community relations to receive direct federal assistance as set forth in the Runaway and Homeless Youth Act. And whereas, the Safe Place Program is committed to protecting the youth of Stillwater by offering short-term houses at neighborhood locations where trained volunteers are available to counsel and advise young people seeking assistance and guidance. And whereas, designated as locations where youth can get information and immediate care, Safe Place is found on businesses such as restaurants, convenience stores, movie theaters, and community buildings such as fire stations, libraries, and community centers. And whereas, the success of Safe Place is based on public-private collaborations between businesses, school systems, fire departments, law enforcement, and a network of volunteers. And Stillwater needs increased numbers of community volunteers serving as mentors and positive influences on young people. Now therefore, be it resolved that the week of March 20th through 26th, 2016, is officially proclaimed as National Safe Place Week.
Would you like to say a word?
Sure.
Okay. I just want to also thank the City of Stillwater for their continued support of Safe Place Program. I think we've done our proclamation for the last eight, nine years for National Safe Place Week. We really try to bring a lot of awareness during this week because it is a national program. Stillwater is one of four communities left in Oklahoma that is still doing the Safe Place Program due to a lot of funding cuts in the other communities. So we feel really passionate about continuing to provide the support and partnering with the fire departments and the libraries and the hospital and so many other businesses like OnQ, Walgreens, Food Pyramid. We have great partnerships and will continue to go out and educate all the youth of Payne County to make sure they know that Safe Place is available for them. Thank you.
And we are so proud of the work that Safe Place does. We thank you. And finally, we have, well, not finally, the League of Women Voters. Sunshine Week. Three people? Yeah, everybody come up here. Sunshine Week, which is a very important week. Whereas, James Madison, the father of the Federal Constitution, wrote that consent of the governed requires that the people be able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives. And whereas, every citizen in our participatory democracy has an inherent right to access to government meetings and public records. And whereas, an open and accessible government is vital to establishing and maintaining that the public's trust and confidence in their government and in the government's ability to effectively serve its citizens. And whereas, the protection of every person's right to access, to access to public records and government meetings is a priority of the City of Stillwater and the Stillwater City Council. Whereas, the Stillwater City Council is committed to openness and transparency in all aspects of its operations and seeks to set a high standard in this regard. Whereas, the Stillwater City Council commits during the Sunshine Week commemorating the anniversary of James Madison's birth and throughout the year to work diligently to enhance the public's access to government records and information, to increase information provided electronically and online, and to ensure that all meetings of deliberative bodies under its jurisdiction are fully noticed and open to the public. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, do hereby proclaim the week of March 20th through 26th, 2016, as the City of Stillwater Sunshine Week Open Government. And what the League of Women Voters does is so important for the City of Stillwater and the state of Oklahoma, and I know that they want to say a few words about Sunshine Week.
My name is Pat Jakes, and this is Gina Longich, and we are members of Stillwater Women Voters and Women Voters Works toward open government, registers of voters, keeps aware of candidates and governmental issues, and then publish them in anonymous information on the website, the 411. And tonight, we are calling Sunshine Week. This organization was started by journalists in the generation of James Madison, who wrote that he said that the government requires that every citizen in our participatory government has the right to access government meetings and open public records. When government agencies began to be more secretive, the journalists said, "No, no you don't. That information is open according to the laws. Please give us your information." So now, there are more laws for members of councils, commissions, boards, committees, and other government entities. And training opportunities are required for elected officials so they can learn all about how to conduct their business openly. Did you know that citizens can file a form, which is on the city website, and on this form, you can request information? If you ask for it, you're not given, there's a form you can use to help track these laws and get information. You might want a little bit of ah. We want to commend the city council for your efforts to allow the sun to shine on their meetings and business. Currently, there are many issues in this state where the laws have been blatantly misused, shadows on the sunshine. So keep up the good work. The Oklahoma FOI Board has pledged for elected officials this night, which asks you to comply with not only the letter, but also the spirit of Oklahoma's open meeting and open government laws. Some of you have already signed this, but we're asking you to re-sign the 2016. And then I give these to the FOI board member, Joyce Senna, and he puts it on the website. And we'd ask you, as a candidate, to sign two. Okay, one to finish out your pledge here with this council and also as you run toward your office. Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
So get your pencils ready. She's putting us to work. Okay. We also have billable cards printed by OFI, which you can share and use to refresh your open meeting slots. And anyone from the audience would like one, we have, if you want to raise your hand, would you like one? You asked us if we had anything to say. I knew you did. You don't get one. I was saying to you about the tours, because I don't want other people to come down here and call you. They're too popular.
Thank you.
The nurses on file, they have been on the website. And you were speaking for us last year.
That's right.
And would you like to take a picture with me? All right. Can we take a picture? One more group that I would like to recog-, actually, two more groups. The next group is the Representatives of SMAC. And I'm going to let them tell you what SMAC means.
Hi, I'm Samantha Dennison.
And I'm Ella Leppe.
And we're seniors at Stata High School. SMAC Week is Stillwater Makes a Change. And each year, the high school, it's a student-led philanthropic campaign, and we choose a local charity to support and raise money for.
This year, our charity is the Seville Center, which is a center for child advocacy for children who are in difficult situations, and they really help through their court cases. I'm sure you guys know all about it. Our goal this year is $85,000, and we're already at $60,000. The actual week itself is next week. And if you guys want to know more, you can go to stillwattormakesachange.com to find out about different specific events or to donate online.
Anything, any questions?
What kinds of it? Go ahead.
Do you know what your mother does for work, Samantha?
I do. I do indeed. I'm the Development Services Director for the City of Stillwater.
Good job. Do you want to run through the events for next week?
Yes, I was going to say, that's what I was going to ask you.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's good.
Go ahead.
No, I just, go for it.
So Monday is a big day. We have the Ford Test Drive, which is from 1:00 to 7:00. And then we have Snack with SMAC, which is like Taste of Stillwater with lots of different local businesses, restaurants, and you can pay $10 for a ticket, and then you get to all you can eat. And then the Manjean, which is the male pageant for Mr. SHS. And then Tuesday is the Talent Show at the Student Union. Wednesday is a high school-only event. It's a free event. It's called the SMAC Bash. It's on the field. Thursday is the Carnival. The, for Open to the Public is 5:30, 7:30? 5:00 to 7:30. And you can bring kids, of course, and then there's a high school block party afterwards. And then Friday night, there's a dance for the high school, and that's when we have our reveal.
And then for the Ford Test Drive, if you're over 18, all you have to do is sign a paper and take a lap around the parking lot in one of their cars or trucks, and they give us money for every person that test drives.
For every address, we get $20. It's a really easy way to donate.
That's great.
Awesome.
I'm still hearing about Mom on the truck, and that was from last year. Thank you so much, but we need to recognize one more person. Why don't you introduce him, because he's such a hard-working man.
Hello, Mr. Taylor. This man is Josh Taylor. He is our SMAC advisor. He's over everything, everything SMAC-related, the details pass through him. It's a tough job.
And he's a full-time teacher, too.
Yeah.
Society is teaching, right?
Yes. I teach 11th grade English in high school on level, and I also am in charge of the leadership classes, and that's where I get to be involved, student council and SMAC. And it's not a hard job. The students do a great job of it. Sam is in charge of all the decorations that we do at the high school. I would encourage you, if you have any time next week to stop by the high school at some point. The entire place is transformed because of the work that Sam and her team has done. And it's a superhero theme, if you can tell from their shirts, which the shirts were designed by a Meridian student this year, which is great. But they transform the high school. It creates a wonderful environment where we get as many high school students involved with philanthropy as early as we can.
Great.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much.
And?
Does Josh get candy?
Yeah.
I'll step to the back. You guys can-
Your kids are going to be sad.
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we should get the city manager to participate in the pageant next year. Josh didn't hear that, but I'm going to, did you hear me?
He's coming back.
Next year, I think we should get the city manager to participate in the pageant.
We have a talk for you. The swimwear contest is always the thing.
There you go. That would be it. That would be it.
Okay, that takes us to the Consent Docket. Councilors, does anyone wish to remove an item, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Docket. Please vote. And the Consent Docket is approved with a vote of 5 to 0. That takes us to the public comment on, well, we don't, no, okay. No public comments, so that will take us to public hearings. I want to make sure I'm on the right thing here. Make sure, is this the right public hearing? All right, public hearings. A. Receive public comment regarding the proposed City of Stillwater operating budget for fiscal year 2016, 2017. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am. It's published in the boards with the statutes.
Okay. Mr. McNichol.
The budget has been presented for your review. We had a meeting last week where, or the last time we met, we had another presentation of the budget by Melissa Reams, our CFO. And this would be the time, if the public has any comments you would like to make or any requests you would like to make in the city budget, for you to speak.
I don't have any further questions.
Well, we would, we would then tell you that the budget will come to you on May the 4th, I believe, or 2nd, for final approval. There will be, I believe, one more public hearing between now and then. If the public has input, they want to try to tell us what they would like to see in the budget. It is on the website. You can access the entire budget on the website. And if you have any questions, you can give me a call, you can give our CFO a call, or anyone in the administration area of the city hall.
Okay, so I didn't open and then close the public hearing, so I will do that right now, since we didn't have anyone. And, Mr. Dorman, do we just move on? There's not really a vote on this? Okay, okay. Okay, so that takes us to Item B, which is the Proposed Increment District Number Two, City of Stillwater and Stillwater West 51 Developed Development District Project Plan, Public Hearing Number Two. Public hearing for the purpose of providing citizens and interested parties an opportunity to express their views regarding the proposed increment district and project plan. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. McNichol.
This would be, again, a time for people to express any thoughts that they have on the proposed TIF District, Tax Increment Financing District, for the west part of Stillwater. It runs from roughly Sanger Road to Range Road. And, Mr. Dorman, I don't know if you, anything you would like to add to that?
No, I mean, other than this is the second hearing. We had the first hearing, as you recall, was a question and answers session. This one is just a traditional public hearing, so all public hearing rules would apply.
All right. So I will open the public hearing, and we have one person to speak, the first person to speak would be Robert Williams.
First, I want to thank you for the opportunity, to all of you, for this, to speak. But, Mr. Dorman, because of the public hearing, is this a question and answer, or is it just me comments?
This is just simply your comments, so-
So there's no question and answer. My comment then would be, I still have a question, and I never have been able to get a straight answer, is why do we do this out on the west side of town? When the majority of Payne County lives east of Western Road. The majority of the population in this community lives east of Western Road. And we're going to give a TIF district to try to stimulate business growth in an area that is also the only land available left in Stillwater to develop. And I don't understand why we need to do that. And then there's, one of the responses has been, well, that's how we get businesses in, and they won't come if we don't. But I do know we Hampton Inn that just developed out there asked for TIF money and was denied, and they still came anyway. So TIF money is not the reason businesses come in. The reason is because they've done their homework, the economics, they know the reason why they need to come to this community. And they're going to come regardless of whether we give them the money. I don't think the amount of millions of dollars in tax revenue that we're going to give out over the next 20 years is worth the incremental income that we may or may not get, because we just don't know. We can speculate on leakage, and we can speculate on how much money real or will not come in. I can- I can say this, others can say that. We just don't know. So, my concern is why? And why on that side of town, when most of Payne County lives over here? So now, we're all gonna have to drive over there. And it's not... It's not an equitable thing to stimulate that kind of funding over there. So that's all I got. Just questions as to why. And again, nicest part of town. That's where it is. It's all that's left to develop, to spend money. And we do have a number of sites available in town currently, so why, again? Why give more incentives? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Put that back on.
I do it all the time.
It's a frequent victim.
The next speaker is John Killam.
How do I look on camera? Looking okay?
He's doing good.
My hair messed up. Well, thank you all very much for allowing me to make these comments. I, too, have some serious concerns about TIFs and whether they're actually as effective as what they... People perceive them to be, how much new revenue is really generated. How that revenue is used is a big part of this. It would be great if we could take the 1% and maybe do some public financing of some things that will help the general economy and the general citizens of Stillwater, as opposed to helping what I think typically has been people coming in from outside of our community to build things, as opposed to it being people who are already citizens of Stillwater. So we're making people outside of Stillwater rich. I don't mind that. That's fine if people want to come to town. I am pro-business. I think that as many businesses as want to come to Stillwater should come to Stillwater, because they love our community, because there's a demand for their product that's not being met currently. So hopefully, the commission will take that into consideration. Whether this passes or not, I'm hoping that if it does pass, that you will really take that into consideration as you give people the money that will be available, because I know it's up to the 1%. I think that's pretty much it. I appreciate you all's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Killam. Counselors, is there discussion? And I guess before I ask that, Mr. Dorman, what do we do with this tonight?
At this point, obviously, if you want to discuss the matter, you can. The only action item is later on the agenda, and that is the first reading of the TIF ordinance. So if you decide that you want to go ahead and proceed with this tonight, then what we're recommending is that you read the title only tonight, which allows the draft that's out there right now to be amended based upon the comments tonight, and maybe comments that may come in the next intervening weeks. And so... But other than to approve by title-only advancement of the ordinance at first reading, that would be about it for tonight.
Okay. Counselors, discussion.
You know, I... And I don't want to take credit for this, so I'll have to say, Mr. Killam, I give you credit for this. I don't want people to think I'm the smartest person for anything, but one thing that, when I met with you and discussed this, that really kind of stuck a nerve with me, was talking about maybe, I don't know, putting part of the money that we gained from this instead of putting into the general revenue, or maybe putting it in some sort of beautification of West 51, or putting it in... I don't know, just not letting it go just to something else that we spend. I think it should be, I don't know, earmarked for something, some specific project, something to make sure that if we do to this out there, that we continue the growth out there, and we don't just leave whoever's out there hanging. I mean, I think a lot of times, and when we get extra money, we just see extra money, and then we do nothing with it, and it causes us problems down the road. And so, I think that's something we should discuss. I don't know your guys' thoughts on maybe, you know, and I don't really have a great suggestion of what that would be, but I think it would be smart to at least kind of have a discussion of putting that money in some sort of fund for something out there.
Well, I... Just to remind you, the whole TIF proposal is basically a framework for how future potential deals would be arranged. And within each individual deal or arrangement, you could make those kind of adjustments. But to blanket the whole district with a specific item like that might be problematic. The whole point to providing the financing and the funding is to help them get the infrastructure in that we need in order for the development occur. So if we take the revenue and then put it to another city purpose, you're basically defeating your purpose of doing that development, I fear. But, I mean, there's nothing to say that this council or a future council could take a specific deal and say, "We want you to do this or that as part of this arrangement." The beauty of this TIF district, we said earlier, was no single developer is driving this. This is the council's deal. This gives you a set of tools to use in the future, so that we're not, I'm just gonna say, winging it on future developments. We have a structure and a framework that we can use to do these sorts of deals or not.
And I think I come from the standpoint of being a former business owner and utilizing the incentives from the bid district. Do I think every business that comes to Stillwater needs an incentive to come here? No. I don't think that's what fits. But I do think there should be a process put in place, so that as we think about it, it does make sense. Now, as a business owner and having certain incentives, it helped me do some things with my business that I wouldn't have probably been able to do if I didn't have those incentives. And that meant a lot to me as a business owner. But I think to really have something or a framework, like Counselor Weaver suggested that this committee has put together, allows an opportunity... We may not ever have a business that has incentives to come here. That's the choice that we get to make, as we look at each business that has the opportunity to come in here. And I don't think there's anything wrong with that. I think we need to seriously look at that. I also think we need to look at balancing the growth and the development of Stillwater. I don't want one area of Stillwater taking all the growth and doing that. I think we've got to be able to balance that out a little bit and provide a framework for that, so that we're not stuck just doing it in one particular area and letting that grow. I think we've got to look at Stillwater as a whole and develop it in a balanced way.
I also agree that we need to look at all of Stillwater. I am on the other side of the idea of a... Philosophically, of a TIF district. I don't think that... I think that big businesses have fabulous research departments, and they come to places that they know they will be successful in, or have a very high probability that they will be successful in. And whether they come or not because of an incentive, some of the research that I have read says no. They make decisions based on where they're going to be successful. If I can see Counselor Weaver's point, that this is a framework, it does give a lot of flexibility. I think there's a tricky piece of saying "we," because this is a 25-year framework, and "we" will not be here. So we will not know what we thought about when we decided this. Of course, other councils can change this.
Well, I would like to think that, just as past councils and this council, future counselors will be just as conscientious and thoughtful in thinking about Stillwater overall and benefiting Stillwater, just as we do. I mean, I would... I trust the people that'll elect the future counselors, and I'm sure they'll sit and do as best a job as they can do. But no, we can't assume what they'll do or what they won't do. But I think I feel confident they'll do what they think is best for Stillwater. And I wanted to also add is, you know, whether you believe an incentive works or doesn't work, you know, there is a good body of evidence that many other communities... And we did, in fact, model hours after other cities in Oklahoma that are doing this. What do they know that we don't know? Other cities are providing these sort of incentives. The chamber would tell you... Well, the chamber in Oklahoma City would tell you that the MAPS project wouldn't have happened without the MAPS sales tax that they had in place and the recruitment that they did to build that up. And so, you know, we can let it happen around us, or we can try to manage it and control the events. I'm one for trying to manage it, and as Counselor Zanotti said, develop all of Stillwater, not just one particular part. Let's have a plan for the whole of Stillwater.
I would like to see more specific criteria for how much or how businesses are vetted for the incentive. And I know that we have... We can do that in a resolution. It could also be included in the ordinance, in the actual TIF agreement. My preference, of course, would be... It would be in the TIF agreement, or TIF... What would you call it? Developer agreement?
Ordinance.
Ordinance, yeah. The development agreement, that is specific with the thing, but I would like to see it upfront, criteria such as, you know... You know, we can go up to 1%, but if you, you know, if you meet all of the criteria of living wage, salaries above such and such, numbers of employees, projected returns, you know, just some idea. And in particular, a community spirit, kind of following on what Counselor Nahara said, coming back to the city. So, Mr. Dorman, these are some questions for you or for the committee. We can say no to anything. This is just a tool for us to use. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Tonight, what we're talking about tonight. The TIF district, just a tool. But when it starts getting more specific, we can say no to anything. As Counselor Zanotti said, we may not have anything. We may not approve anything. That's... We can do that.
Right. The only way that a development occurs under this framework is for you to review and approve a development agreement as to a specific project. And until that happens, not one penny is spent.
Okay. So I am... I agree with... Vice Pres...
I've been promoted.
I've been watching too many debates, huh? Woo! With Vice Mayor Darlington, that I would also like to see, you know, in a perfect world, I want to see companies coming in that are bringing in new money, that bring in living wages, that bring in opportunity that hasn't been here before. And I agree with Counselor Nahara. Instead of giving money back to the developer, I would love to give it back to the community in some way. But again, that would be in the developer plan.
It would be in the development agreement. There's... The way that the TIF is structured, there's two types of investments that are made, what they call project costs. One are pure infrastructure, and then the other one are amenity-type things that the statute permits. And in some instances, you can have an amenity that would maybe benefit an entire area, streetscapes, things like that. So those things are certainly things that the TIF could finance in addition. More realistically, you're probably looking at things like the wall that was required in the bud that was created for the... When the development was approved over one of the 40 acres, that would... Basically, it would have been a target. That's what everyone thought it was going to be. And there was a wall that protected the neighborhood. That's the kind of thing that would fund. Regional drainage, things like that.
Could it fund green space or sidewalks?
It can fund all of those things, yes. And there's a very long list. The definition of project cost is like a page and a half long in the statute. I mean, it's very inclusive, but it will depend on the specific project and what the needs of the developer are to bring the project to the city. So... But certainly, it is something you could consider.
And I have one more question. I don't know what the lot size, if it was in there, I didn't... I don't remember. But is there any way we can make it bigger parcels than it currently is? So...
There's no minimum development lot size in the TIF ordinance that's proposed. If you wanted to add that to the ordinance, or you wanted to add it to the resolution, you could do it either way, if you chose to do something.
And I wanted to add one more thing, too. I think we all would love to have that, and if one of us could think it up, it would be fabulous. That dream business that's not going to be in competition with any other business in Stillwater, we would all be developing in that area. I think the reality is, is we just want to make sure that the development makes sense for Stillwater and where the future needs to go. And whether it's a brand-new one that we've never thought of, which I hope, you know, I would love if that would happen, but I'm confident that it's probably going to be something that'll be in competition somewhere with something in this town. I just want to make sure we're making the right decision to develop it there on the west side of town, and I think that's what this framework allows us to look at and really figure out if that is really what we want to do.
So this... Thank you to the committee, because they did give us flexibility.
For sure.
Anybody else? So... I just have to ask, I'm not exactly sure how this makes sure that what we want on the west side is on the west side, because anybody can develop on the west side who wants to develop on the west side.
Well, I think this framework allows us the opportunity to not, you know, have a business develop there, potentially that is the 25th business, just like something that's already here in Stillwater, and incentivize that.
True. I mean, we don't have to incentivize them, but they can develop there.
You bet.
I mean, it does not protect that area from 45 more fast-food restaurants.
But we wouldn't have incentivized them.
Right. That's right. But I'm saying, we don't need a TIF district to do that. And the TIF district doesn't protect...
Well, but the council's not gonna... I mean, I think all of us can agree, we're not gonna incentivize a fast-food restaurant. I mean, that's...
Well, you never say never, but that would be...
I mean, but that's not the purpose of this. I mean, the purpose of... I mean, if you read the TIF, I mean, it's a catalyst of growth out there. I mean, it said... Those words are literally in this agreement, "a catalyst of growth." I don't think a fast-food restaurant is considered a catalyst. So I think, I mean...
What is a catalyst, though? Do we need to be more specific on that?
Well, again, Counselor Zanotti keeps saying the word "framework," and she's exactly right. The TIF district instrument will give you the tools, so that each development deal that comes your way, you can structure any way you want as a council. You can dictate what color they paint their building in each development agreement. The general structure gives you the freedom. We didn't want to tie the hands up of the council, so that they had to do things so expressly spelled out, that it would encumber us as a council. So, you know, we have done a number of economic development deals in this community. It's been on an ad hoc basis. The deals have some variance. This gives you some structure, so that you can have some consistency as you move forward. That was the whole point. And when we had our strategic planning session, or I can't remember which session it was, but there was some general discussion that we wanted to develop the western edge of the community. We wanted some infill in there. So I'm, you know, that was something I thought we all agreed to. Or otherwise, why would we have even spun this up and gone through this effort and used these volunteers' times and the staff's time to actually develop the instruments that you have before?
And that certainly would be the be-all, end-all, because we have the east side of town that has some things that need to be taken care of, too. You just can't do it all at one time.
Right.
Well, and I do want to say how much we appreciate what the committee did and how much time you did spend. I know you spent a lot of time, and staffed it as well. And whatever comes out of this, what came out of this, was you studied it and you made a recommendation.
Right.
And I think, just like a staff would make a recommendation, you have made this recommendation for us. So we could... I think that... Do we vote on this, on moving it? First reading?
Item 8C is the first-read ordinance, if you choose to go forward with that tonight.
Any more discussion? And we'll just go down to that ordinance before we vote.
Do we go ahead and read the ordinance now?
Sure. Sure.
It would be ordinance number 3339. The ordinance approving and adopting... It will be ordinance number 3337, ordinance approving and adopting the Stillwater West 51 Development District Project Plan, designating and adopting project area and increment district boundaries, establishing a date for the creation of increment district number two, City of Stillwater, adopting certain findings, authorizing the City of Stillwater to carry out an administrative project plan, establishing a tax apportionment fund, declaring apportioned funds to be special funds of the City of Stillwater or alternative authorized entity, authorizing the use of sales tax and income revenues for the payment or financing of certain project costs, authorizing use of other resources to pay for or finance project costs, authorizing the Stillwater Economic Development Authority or alternative authorized entity to issue apportionment notes and carry out certain provisions of the project plan, ratifying and confirming the actions, recommendations, and findings of the city and the planning commission, directing continuing apportionment, providing for several billings. The recommendation tonight is to approve this by title only per the city charter, section 2-13, so...
And it's by title only so we can change the language or recommend new language?
Yes, and there's draft language out there right now. I wanted everyone to have a chance to see how it's basically structured, and we can tweak that language or change pieces of it. You'd need to do that between now and the second reading, which is tentatively scheduled for April 4.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Is there a motion on this?
I move to take it to the first reading.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to appro-
Advance to second.
Advance to a second reading?
Second reading.
Please vote. And it is approved with a vote of five to zero. Yes.
I just wanted to make a comment about my vote. I did vote to advance it to the first reading, and I am going to ask for a relook at language before the second reading.
Okay. All right, that takes us to...
I would suggest that if the council does significantly revise the language, that it would be, I think, a good gesture to offer the committee a chance to review those comments, to offer additional comments.
Duly noted. Thank you. Okay, so that was, Mr. Dorman, you just want to go through the ordinances now?
I guess we're at the ordinances.
All right, we're at the ordinances, yeah.
First reading, ordinance number 3337, ordinance relating to public health safety, health and safety revising the 911 emergency number ordinance, section 5, emergency telephone, service and fee, their maintaining the current 5% user fee established and declaring an emergency. This is just an annual update of our 911 fee. We have to do this each year to continue it into place.
Motion to approve and move to second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that is approved with a vote of five to zero. Mr. Dorman, next item?
Ordinance number 3338, an ordinance admitting the code of ordinances of City of Stillwater by amending chapter 2, administration, article 1, in general, by amending section 2-1, tort claims and payment. The draft that you have in front of you is a long-anticipated, I'm assuming, revision to the existing ordinance that allows the city manager to settle tort claims up to $25,000. The proposal is to enlarge that authority to $50,000 and to additionally give the city manager the authority to settle workers' compensation claims under the same heading. It does require that a set of guidelines be approved by the council via resolution before the manager's able to exercise that authority. So if you do vote to advance this to second reading, then we would provide you a companion resolution ostensibly on the April 4th agenda for the, to make sure that this goes into effect. And we are not asking for an emergency clause on this, so this will actually take 30 days to, for full implementation, should you choose to approve it on second reading on April 4.
Discussion. Motion?
Motion to move to second reading. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to move to second reading. Please vote. And that moves to the second reading with a vote of five to zero. And one more, Mr. Dorman, on second reading.
Second reading, ordinance 3336, an ordinance closing a portion of the right-of-way Ramsey Street adjacent to the property address of 616 South Ramsey Street.
Discussion.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Please vote. And the ordinance is approved with a vote of five to zero. That moves us to reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman.
Actually, the item that sent to city manager is my announcement, so with his permission, I will just go ahead and make that request. Requesting a second reading session presented to 25OS subsection 307B1 under the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act for the purpose of confidential communication during the employment appointment promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of City Attorney Tom Dorman. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, Mr. McNichol.
I do, Mayor, thank you. Stillwater Energy Center is progressing well and continues to be on track for scheduled June completion date. The exterior is being finished up, the interior walls are going up and being prepared for sheet rock. And as a reminder, you're able to view the construction project as it moves on via live webcam through our website. And that might be a really good tour eventually for some of the Boy Scouts. Here is, pretty interesting, pretty interesting place. It'll come online in June. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. City counselors, do we have any news? Or, I know we have news, so we'll start with Counselor Nahara.
Yeah, he always asks you, like, "Does he have any?" This shows up every week. With severe weather season approaching, we'd like to remind everyone to register your storm shelters on the city's website if you haven't already. The information you provide will be used to rescue personnel when they respond to a disaster in our area. You can register at stillwaterboard.
Thank you for calling me out on that, Counselor Nahara. And Vice Mayor Pat Darlington and Counselor Elaine Zanotti are holding office hours at Aspen Coffee on North Perkins Road Tuesday, March 29th, from 5:45 to 7:30 p.m. This is a great way, if you have any kind of questions and you want to email, but you feel like you really need to speak with someone in person, it's a great way to go and get your questions answered all in one stop.
Well, maybe not answered, but at least written down, and we will find the answers.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
A reminder that we do have a city council election coming up on April 5th. Seat one will be, sorry to see Counselor Weaver go, but seat one is up for election on April 5th. So be sure to vote. On that ballot also, there are some charter amendment, proposed city charter amendments. The League of Women Voters is hosting a forum, another thing that the League of Women Voters does very well, on March 31st, here in the council hearing room at 7 o'clock, and that will address the proposed city charter amendments. An opportunity for voters to ask questions and learn more about the proposed amendments before voting on April 5th.
And there will be, city staff will be here, we will be here, so we hope, we should be able to answer all of the questions. Counselors Zanotti?
You bet. First of all, I am right under this vent, so I have been freezing all night. The Sharar Museum opened a new exhibit called Stillwater in the 1920s. This exhibit features a Letterman sweater from Stillwater High School, a baseball uniform, and an original door of the old Stillwater train station. The exhibit will now be open through winter 2016, and as always, the admission is free.
Okay, who has radio tomorrow?
I think I do. Yeah, I do.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so I am going to move recess and move to the SUA minutes. And so I call the Stillwater Utilities Authority March 21st meeting to order. And counselors, does anyone wish to remove an item on the consent docket? Or is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Please vote. And the consent docket is approved with a vote of five to zero. And are there any questions or inquiries?
No, ma'am.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Okay, we're going to vote, but I wanted to say thank you to the Boy Scouts. You just didn't quite give me time. Thank you, Boy Scouts, for showing up. This is troop number, let's see, troop 802. Thank you, troop 802.
Thank you for having us. They're headed over to their weekly meeting now, so that's why I was...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, now we can vote. And we, the SUA meeting is adjourned with a vote of five to zero. We will go back to city council, and we need, do we have a motion to move into executive session?
Still moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to move into executive session. Please vote. And we are moving into executive session with a vote of five-